Claudine Knight, you're breaking up a little.
Okay, this is the best I got.
We're live.
Okay, it's 6:05, we're gonna call this meeting to order. Welcome everyone to our school committee meeting. We are going to, let me tell you, we have members Kissinger, Donovan, Green, Allen, and McFadden present. And we have our administrators, our superintendent, James Aaronakis, we have Bob Ross, Jeremy Taylor, and legal counsel Andrew Hennessy, and Marie Hernsontsch. Okay, I think I got everybody.
Claudine, I think Amy just jumped on.
Okay. Amy, are you there?
Yep, I'm here.
Okay, excellent, and we have our member Gardner. Okay, so we have a full school committee tonight. Excellent. Okay, we will go to open forum. So if there's anyone in the audience that would like to address the school committee on something that is not on the agenda, you may do so now. There's a lot of people on, so if somebody would like to say something, you can just say I want to say something. Okay, so we're good. Okay, we are going to go to recognitions and achievements. So we have our exciting Rhode Island Superintendent of the Year 2021, Jimmy Aaronakis. I'm gonna say a few words first and then I'll recognize the rest of the committee. So I brought over to Jim today a plaque and engraved Crystal Apple. So Jim, if you want to put those next to you, I'm going to virtually present those to you on behalf of the school committee. Just so everybody can see them.
You're not gonna be able to see them unless I hold them up.
That's okay, just hold each one at one time then you can put them down. Okay, so we'd like to present Jimmy Aaronakis, this engraved Crystal Apple, and there's an engraved plaque. Excellent.
Nice.
Very good. And we'd like to congratulate him on his earned and well-deserved 2020-21 Rhode Island Superintendent of the Year award. We are extremely fortunate to have Jim as our leader of our district. His journey here began with a budget and a structural deficit, contract negotiations with NEA, race to the top initiatives in need of attention in areas in need of improvement. From day one, it was get to know the lay of the land and get to work. So that's what Jim did. Jim was up for the challenges and did not disappoint. In fact, he excelled in all areas. Year after year, his vision, creative thinking, and commitment propel us forward. His missions are always student-centered, and his work ethic makes those around him better. His character, knowledge, and professionalism make him a well-respected superintendent around the state. Ride seeks his advice, the commissioner acknowledges his successes, and he holds and has held executive positions with the RISAB board. When COVID-19 hit, many districts across the country either stopped educating their students or failed to virtual, or failed at virtual learning. Not Exeter West Greenwich. With Jim at the helm, administrators, faculty, and staff came together, and the ship was steered through the thick fog and calmly landed ashore. This year again will have its challenges, but as always, I'm confident Jim will embrace everything that is thrown at him, and our district will continue to provide the top-notch education our students and parents enjoy year after year. Jim is exemplary leader and makes Exeter West Greenwich a better place. It's a privilege to serve on this school committee with Jim as our CEO. Jim, again, congratulations on this wonderful accomplishment, and we're very proud of you.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. So I'd like to acknowledge our school committee members, and if you want to speak, go ahead.
Congratulations, Jim. Glad you're with us. You know how I feel. Well deserved.
Thanks, Lee.
Jim, congratulations. I concur with everything Claudine said, well deserved. You're extremely genuine as well and humble, which makes a huge difference in your leadership, and we thank you very much.
Thanks, Cheryl.
Congratulations, Jim. It's just an honor to work with you.
Thank you, Diane.
I'm so in the Zoom mode, I have my virtual hand raised.
Oh, sorry, Terry.
I'm not used to moving on until I'm called upon. You know, Jim, I've been on the school committee almost 10 years now, and you know, have seen so many students and faculty honored during that time. And you might know that I don't often say something during those occasions because I feel that it's their time, their time of recognition. You know, for me as an elected official, otherwise known as a politician, to kind of jump in on that and maybe repeat something that other people have said, I think can take away from the moment. So most of the people on this call right now, many of you have received personal notes from me after the fact because it's certainly, they're all things that deserve recognition and appreciation, but I haven't always felt that it was appropriate for me to just take up time. But I'm doing it now because, you know, if there ever was a shout-it-from-the-mountain-top moment, this is it. Jim is a supremely accomplished education professional. And, you know, a superintendent has to take direction from seven laypeople and translate that into, you know, the policies that they set forth. They translate that into actions that are not only effective, but comply with the law, that are in the best interest of the students, that recognize the importance of a healthy and supportive workplace. And that's not an easy feat. And, but Jim has done it, and Jim has done it from the moment he's arrived in the district. And the excellence and honor that you bring to the district, Jim, is, it defies my words. I am so appreciative, and I know the district is appreciative of the investment, the personal investment that you've made, and the dedication that you bring, and your never-giving-up attitude. And I just want to tell you how much I believe that no one is more deserving than the award that you've received as Superintendent of the Year. Thank you.
Thank you, Terry.
Thank you, everybody. Now I'd like to recognize the public, which obviously is our faculty, staff, administrators. I'm so excited that you all joined us, thanks to Barbara and Sue for getting that all set up, and Jeremy. So I'm gonna go ahead and acknowledge you guys, and I'm gonna let Jeremy run the show however that needs to be done.
All right, so you guys have the order in the gula sheet. Go in order.
Congratulations, Jim.
You, Barbara.
Congratulations, Jim.
Congratulations, Jim.
Thank you, Holly.
Congratulations, Jim.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Congratulations, Jim.
Thanks, Bob.
Congratulations, Jim.
Thank you, Mark.
Congratulations, Jim.
Thank you, I think that's Amy.
It's Madame.
Congratulations, Jim. You rock. Don't know what we'd do without you. Your guidance is superb. Thank you.
Thank you, Dawn.
Congratulations, Jim.
Thank you.
Jim, congratulations.
Thanks, Jerry.
Congratulations, Jim. I'm so happy to be part of the EWG community with you as our leader.
Thank you, Nurse.
Congratulations, Jim.
Congratulations, Jim. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mobar.
Congratulations, Jim.
Congratulations, Jim.
Thanks, Julie.
Congratulations, Jim. I'm saying this out of order because I don't know, but I'm, congratulations.
Thanks, Jim.
Congratulations, Jim. I'm saying it out of order too because the order seems standard. Congratulations, well deserved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, Jim, this is my daughter's birthday party dinner, so we're all gonna say.
Congratulations, Jim.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Jim.
Thank you, Marcy.
Congratulations, Jim.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Well deserved.
Congratulations, Jim. Best of luck.
Thank you. Hi, Jim.
Congratulations, Jim.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Jim.
Thanks, Lisa.
Congratulations, Jim.
Thank you, Marie.
Congratulations, Jim.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Jim.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Jim, and Godspeed.
Thanks, Mark.
Congratulations, Jim.
Thank you, Allison.
Congratulations, Jim.
Hi, Bukachis.
Congratulations, Jim.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Jim.
Well, thank you.
Jim, I don't know if you can see me, but congratulations.
I could see you. Thank you, Tim.
Congratulations, Jim.
Thank you, Laurie.
Congratulations, Jim. Well deserved.
Thank you, Olga.
Congratulations, Jim.
Thank you.
Woohoo, congratulations.
It's Melissa.
Congratulations, Jim. Congratulations.
Oh, thank you, thank you, Karen.
Congratulations, Jim.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Jim.
Thank you, Rebecca.
Congratulations, Jim.
Thanks, Robin.
I'll jump in, congratulations.
Thank you, Ann.
Congratulations, Jim.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Jim.
Thanks, Stephanie.
Congratulations, Jim. If you can see me, I think I'm out of order now.
I see you.
Okay. Congrats.
Congratulations, Jim. So happy for you.
Thank you. Thank you, neighbor.
You're welcome, neighbor.
Congratulations, Jim. It's a pleasure every day working with you and learning from you, all always in the best interest of students. Thank you so much. Congratulations.
Thanks, Sarah.
Congratulations, Jim.
Thank you, Meredith.
Anybody who hasn't said congratulations?
Congratulations, Jim. Thank you for everything earned 1,000 times over.
Thanks, Chris.
Congratulations, Jim.
Congratulations, Jim.
Congratulations, Jim.
Congratulations, Jim.
Thank you. Thanks, Pat.
Congratulations, Jim.
Thank you.
Hey, Jim. Congratulations.
Thanks, Tom.
Congratulations, Jim.
Thank you. Thank you, Jane.
Congratulations, Jim, from all of the faculty that's here that didn't make it, and we all know what a pleasure it is to be with you and to work with you. Well deserved. Thank you.
Thanks, Mary.
Okay, I think that's everybody who was on the call. Congratulations, Jim.
Thank you, JT.
Congratulations, Jim.
Thank you, Andrew. I'm a little, I'm a little overwhelmed because I was not prepared for this. I know that I have to approve with Claudine the agenda, but I never saw this item on the agenda. It wasn't part of the agenda when I gave it over to Robin. And I happened to run into somebody today who mentioned that she wasn't going to be able to jump on the Zoom meeting. And it was like 4 o'clock this afternoon, and I had no idea what she was talking about. And then I saw the agenda, so this is like completely taking me by surprise. But I just, I have said this so many times, and I put it in writing, and I mean it from the bottom of my, bottom of my heart, that this past year in particular has been such a challenge. But I feel like we all share in the recognition because without the faculty and the support of our communities, we, none of us could be successful. But I am so proud of our district, I'm so proud of the people that work in our district, and more, more this year than ever before, I've seen this crowd come together and just support each other and go out of their way to make sure that, that we're all okay. And so I, I know that everybody got on to thank me, but I want to take this opportunity to thank all of you because you've made this year such, such an honor to be, to be the superintendent in Exeter West Greenwich. So, so thank you so much. I appreciate it. Thanks for getting on, on your, during your summer vacation, if you've had one. And I just appreciate you all so much. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for attending. I appreciate all your, all your comments, all your support.
Claudine, you need to kill your video.
Okay. We're gonna move on. Oh, yeah, I forgot. Okay, is that better?
Yes.
Sorry about that. Is that better? Okay, good. All ready. Okay, so we will go to the, I'm just gonna keep going as the teachers sign out. So we have the consent agenda, and I'm gonna turn that over to our superintendent.
Okay, under consent, we have the approval of the regular meeting minutes from July 14th. Remember, this was, this was a topic that we tabled because we did not have a quorum to vote on these minutes at the last meeting. We also have the executive session in regular meeting minutes from August 11th. We have one of our final appointments. This is a special education teacher at the high school. It is a position that has been in the budget since its development. And this, this position is the result of some staff movement that occurred as a result of a retirement. We have an extracurricular athletic resignation. By the way, on the new appointment, all of the paperwork is in. So that pending receipt of all mandatory paperwork is not applicable. In this case, we, we did go over her file today, and she's all set. And then we also have two recalls. These are also positions that are in the budget. One of them is the halftime position of senior project coordinator. The only reason that we held off on this is because we weren't sure who was going to fill the position. So we're good with that now. And then we have the, we have a special educator at Metcalf, and that is the result of some movement among the staff who voluntarily are transferring to different certifications so that I can take care of individuals who needed a distance learning assignment because of health concerns. Again, this is a position that has been budgeted. I just held off on calling the person back until I was confident that we needed the position. We have monthly bills, and then we have a number of homeschool approvals, a couple of returning families, and a few new families for homeschool approval. That covers it.
Okay. I'm thinking we're gonna poll all the minutes because we have a variety of people not present at some of the, at some of the meetings. So if anybody, anybody else polled or any comments on anything?
I just wanted to poll. I can't hear you very well, Claudine, but this is Diane. I just wanted to poll the meetings of August 11th.
Yeah, I'm gonna poll all the minutes. Anybody else? Okay, so let's have a motion to approve the consent agenda. Left the meeting minutes of July 14th, August 11th, executive session, and regular minutes of August 4th, and we'll vote on this separately. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Amy seconded. Okay, I'm gonna take a roll call vote. Member Kissinger? Can you guys hear me? Okay, good. Okay, member Donovan?
Aye.
Member Green? Cheryl, can you hear me?
I'm sorry, I think I was muted. I can vote on this because you polled the other, the minutes.
I polled all the minutes.
Okay, okay, aye. Sorry, I couldn't hear that part.
Yep, okay. Let's see, where did I leave off? Member Allen?
Aye.
Member McFadden?
Aye.
And member Gardner?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Okay, then let's have a mo, I'm gonna do the July 14th, 14th minutes, and then we can do the executive session and the meeting minutes of August 11th in a separate motion because those are the same members that were absent. So if we can have a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of July 14th.
So moved.
So moved. Second.
Okay, you can pick either Lee or Terry for the motion. Diane seconded. Okay, so let's see. Member Kissinger?
Aye.
Member Donovan?
Aye.
Member Green?
Abstain, right?
No, you were there for that one.
For the, okay, aye, sorry.
Yeah, July 14th, you were there. Paul and Amy, Paul and Amy weren't there. Member Allen?
Aye.
Member McFadden?
Abstention.
And member Gardner?
Abstain.
Okay, motion carries. And then if we can have a motion to approve the executive session minutes of August 11th and the regular meeting minutes of August 11th.
So moved.
Second.
Hello?
Yeah, I think Claudine disappeared.
She just lost her internet. Lee, do you want to do the roll call?
Sure. I vote aye. Terry?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Diane?
Aye.
Amy? Cheryl?
Abstain.
So I think, the ayes have it, it passes. When Claudine gets back, we can, she can vote.
Diane, you were at the August 11th meeting, right?
We want one. I'm sorry.
Okay, sorry, guys, I lost the internet connection. I'm back. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good. Okay, so let's see, we had, we're on the August.
All we need is your vote, Claudine.
Okay, good, aye.
Motion carries.
Thankfully. Okay, good. So we're all for the contested agenda, good?
Yes.
All right. Excellent. Okay, so we will go to, let's see, there's no correspondence, so we'll go to the 2021 budget.
So the 2021 budget, the school committee voted on the number at the last meeting, and we talked about the recommended reductions. I have moved all of those reductions through the system. We now have a balanced budget according to the vote of the school committee. And the numbers worked out exactly as we anticipated that they would based on the estimated savings that I presented at the last meeting. So we're good. I mean, it's not good, but the budget is where it needs to be.
Yep, balanced. Anybody have any questions? Everybody's good? Okay.
Yes.
We'll go to new business. So we have a revised calendar based on the governor's, I believe, of moving the school start date. So Jim, I'll go to you on that.
Can I ask a silly question?
Yep.
Since the calendar's being dictated to us, why do we have to approve it?
There are some adjustments. Lee, the only thing that is being given to us is the 180 days of the calendar, but our contracts have additional days. So we need to, we need to schedule those added days. We also, we had to build in things like when parent-teacher conferences were going to be, that kind of thing. So there are some unique decisions that are made through the calendar that we need to vote on.
Okay, I concede.
So basically, the new, we haven't even started the school year, and this is the second break-in. But the new calendar reflects the student start date of September 14th. Three days prior to that for teachers, that's part of the 180 days. That is September 9th, 10th, and 11th. And then we also have the four days that are in the teacher's contract all front-loaded. So we will actually begin on September 1st with our all-staff orientation, and then we have several professional development days, including the primary day on the 8th, which was part of our original calendar, before we move into the state calendar from the 9th through the 11th. We've also built in all of the professional development days per the Council 94 contract. Again, everything is front-loaded because we have a lot to do once the school year begins to make sure that everybody is on the same page about, about all the precautions and safety measures that are in place. So that is the, that is the main change to the calendar. The other adjustment is obviously the last day of. The other adjustment is obviously the last day of school and also the last full day for seniors. Those are dates that needed to be adjusted based on the revised start date according to the governor's calendar.
Okay, any questions? Okay, so if we can have a motion to approve revised 2020-21 school calendar.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Member Kissinger?
Aye.
Member Donovan?
Aye.
Member Green?
Oops, sorry, aye, I was on mute. I keep doing that by mistake, sorry.
Member Allen?
Aye.
Member McFadden?
Aye.
And member Gardner? Amy, are you there? I don't see Amy. Maybe we lost her. Okay, I'm an aye, so motion carries. Okay, let's see. We have unfinished business. We have the 2020-21 reentry planning updates.
Okay, so today was a busy day. We, I had meetings with the Superintendent's Association. I had a meeting with the governor's office. And then Ride was on the call with the Superintendent's Association today. So we got several updates. The, we are expecting to hear on August 31st the decision about reopening, which plan we're allowed to reopen under. I, I don't expect it to come any earlier than the 31st, although we did put the request in that that happens. The other update is that we did submit our revised plan to the Department of Ed. That is based on the discussion that I had at the last meeting, where they requested that our plan include the provision that all kids in elementary schools go back even under the partial return plan. And the plan that we submitted basically allows families to make a choice because we have quite a few families that were not comfortable sending their children back under the partial return model if every child was going to be in that. So they were concerned about social distancing, the safety measures. We did conduct a survey of the community, parents of elementary students, and we used the results of that survey to justify the revised plan. So basically, again, under the partial return plan, parents will be able to have whatever, whichever, whatever they want in terms of full distance learning, full return to school for in-person or partial return. And the percentages actually work out so that all of our classroom sizes will be small enough under that scenario, though we can still maintain the appropriate social distancing that is required under the guidance. I am having a, another community forum tomorrow evening that notice went out today, so I could go over all of these updates with the elementary families. There is no change to the secondary plan. So that, that meeting is tomorrow. I think I sent the, the link to the meeting and the notice that went out to all the school committee members in case you wanted to join. And as a, after that meeting, there is a follow-up survey with the last piece of information that we need so that we can accurately put together or make final adjustments to class lists and, and have a conversation with our bus vendor so that we're prepared for any adjustments in bus routes that are necessary based on bus ridership numbers. So that is a conversation that we're having tomorrow. After that, we'll be ready to open under any scenario. And I would, again, nothing is official until the 31st when the governor makes the call. But based on the metrics and based on the rates of infection in our towns, I suspect that we are going to, my guess is that she's gonna tell us we're opening under the full return model. If I'm wrong, then I would, I would guess the next is, is partial return. But I, I do not believe that we are in a position where limited return or no return is even an option at this point. So we will be ready to go.
Excellent. Any questions? Comments?
I just have a general question and it's, is there any scenario, Jim, that you could imagine that would prevent us from opening on the 14th or the 15th?
The only, yep. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
All right. So again, I don't see major shifts in the infection rate or the spread rate in our, in our communities. This is not, the reopening is not going to be based on state numbers. It's going to be based on a community by community, the data from community to community. So our numbers have been very steady and very low. So I, I don't see that changing over the next week that would adjust the decision to return to school. The only remaining step that hasn't happened yet is that every school building is going to be visited by the Department of Health. They're sending out review teams. And so I will join that team as well as Steve Bailey when they come out. And they're, they're going to just make a final assessment of whether the buildings are given the clear to open. That is expected to be completed by the beginning of next week, if not sooner. That's according to the information that we received today. I don't know when our date is yet, but I, I expect to be contacted tomorrow so that they can set up their appointment. If there is anything that comes up during that visit that is of significant enough concern to the Department of Health, they could tell us that we can't open a particular building. I don't, I don't expect that to happen, but, but it's the only obstacle that I can think of that may prevent reopening. And, and it wouldn't be the whole district. It might be a school. Again, I don't think it's gonna happen, but that is a step that's, that's remaining.
I guess my concern is all the craziness you hear about tents and making sure that the atmosphere in the clo, the, the classrooms are being turned over, you know, five times an hour kind of business. Are any of those things that I just mentioned at all relevant at this point? Or are they just like, like things that other districts might have to relate to and not us?
So the, that's really the reason, the tent thing is just an option that some school districts maybe have chosen to do, but it is not a requirement at all. I mean, we, we certainly have encouraged teachers to utilize outdoor space when it's appropriate, but we're not putting up tents anywhere. And in terms of the airflow and the HVAC system, that's gotten a lot of press over the last several days. According to the conversation that we had today, and we, we actually got a guidance document today as well, or late yesterday. Looking at airflow in terms of the HVAC system is just one variable. If, if we have classrooms with sufficient windows, if we have classrooms that, you know, that we're able to, to get airflow in a different way, then that is an alternative strategy according to the guidance document that we received to have sufficient airflow. That's the reason the Department of Health is coming out to do a review of every building. So, so again, I think, I think, you know, we do have some classrooms that are, that do not have windows. In most of those cases, we have worked out a plan to move the classroom to a, a room that will be vacant based on kids that have chosen distance learning and the fact that our specials at the elementary are going to be distance virtual instead of in-person. So we've been able to move classrooms around. I know at the elementary schools, we will have no classrooms with, without outdoor air being able to come in and out of the room. And at the high school and the junior high school, yes, we do have some classrooms that are on the inside. I'm actually meeting with the high school administrators tomorrow so that we could go over some staffing considerations and room assignments. So I, again, I think, I, I think that our HVAC system needs some work, but it is not the end-all, be-all. As long as there are other things that are in place, then we will be given the clear to open.
Claudine, can I ask a question?
Yeah, go ahead, true.
Jim, I was just curious about that new task force the governor has put together. And I don't know if you could briefly explain. I mean, I, I know the Department of Health is coming around to buildings and stuff, but how is the National Guard being utilized with this task force? It was a little bit confusing to me.
Good question. So the, the task force that was announced, I think she made the announcement yesterday during her, her briefing. And then, and then when I was on the, when I was on line with the governor's office today, it wasn't the governor that we were speaking to, but, but the gentleman, Kevin Gallagher, who was representing the governor's office, did go into quite a bit of detail about what that will look like. So basically, the National Guard, as well as a number of other, I guess, support agencies are part of this, this task force that the governor has put together. And the design of the, of the team is that when a district has any kind of an issue or any kind of a concern relative to reopening or once, once we do open, if there is a concern that comes up, that we will have a contact person directly with this group that we are to call. And, and their job is going to be to support us to come up with a solution to whatever the issue is. So the example that the gentleman from the governor's office gave today was suppose you have a day when 20% of your teaching staff is homesick, which could very well happen based on the requirements according to the playbook. And the quote was, "Call the task force and we will do everything in our power to get bodies to your building so that you can remain open." I mean, I don't know how reasonable that is, but, but that was the example that they gave. So I don't.
You don't necessarily have to. There's options, you don't have to utilize it. Okay, because I, what I was reading, you know, they, they have hand sanitizer if you need it. You can call them for that. I'm like, all right, I think the school districts can handle this. But it was just, I, I, it was just a little much to me, but.
Yeah.
That's just me.
I mean, I, I would envision some really extraordinary circumstance that, you know, because clearly some, some situations are, are gonna be things that we could have never predicted. That would be when I would, when I would reach out. But for small things like, you know, we're out of hand sanitizer and the bathroom on the second floor, I got it.
It was in the paper. I read it. Thank you.
All right. I, I vote that they use this, the half ton trucks and the home bees to supplement the transportation problems.
There you go.
Yeah, that, I guess the National Guard has been, has been contacted to support transportation. I don't know how exactly that's working. We don't need any support in our district. We have, we have a plan that doesn't require additional buses. We don't require any additional drivers, no additional staff. We're good. The only thing that we did was add an additional tier, which we were able to do by adjusting the length of the school day and having some virtual specials at the elementary school in place of in-person specials. And then we have a shorter day at the secondary, which will allow the teachers an hour, an hour each day to connect with the kids that are on at-home learning. So, because remember at the high school, some kids that chose distance learning will still be enrolled in. We wanted to provide some time for them to connect with kids that are at home, and that's how we did it.
Okay, anyone else? Everybody's good? Okay, we're gonna try to get to this before we all lose our connection because the storms are rolling through. Let's see, so we have capital project update bond discussion. Bob, before you start, or whoever's gonna start, members, if, if you're not speaking, if you don't mind putting yourselves on mute just because there's some stuff going on in somebody's background and it kind of messes up us hearing who are speaking. Okay.
Okay.
Bob, unmute yourself, Bob, because I just muted everybody.
There we go. All right, the, um, thank you. The, um, capital projects in district for the summer are ongoing. Martone is over at Metcalf, Martone LLC. They're doing the, in classroom entryways at Metcalf. They've been on site for the past three days or two days. And they're moving right along, as I reported in a previous meeting. They're doing fabrication offsite and then putting it, installing it room by room as they go along. The Metcalf boiler, again, we're, they're doing some, you know, preliminary work. They've already gotten the boiler out of there. They're doing prep work to receive the new boiler when it comes, when it arrives. That's kind of the update on the projects we have in hand. There is a building committee meeting tomorrow night. And it's, the agenda focuses on kind of what came out of the last school committee of the self-funded capital projects, stage one submittal to be submitted at the same time as the stage two. It would just be a subset of the 17.4. The superintendent and I have discussed with Toronto Architect the projects that would be included as the subset that will be picked up at tomorrow night's building committee meeting. The timeline gets a little crunchy and I've reached out to Andrew and his firm and have just trying to work at, you know, the big thing that we need is the enabling legislation, the bond council, all of those things for the 17.4 million. And, you know, in, without specific dates, but by month, it's submittal in September, approval by CC in November, enabling legislation after the first of the year, a vote prior to February 15th so that if the vote on the bond fails, then we submit stage two in February of the self-funded model. And then that would hit the, and then we would just go from there. But we would be on track with the stage two, three and four of the self-funded. I know that was a lot and that will come out in the building committee meeting, meeting minutes, but there is some logistical timing elements that are gonna impact us.
Okay, sorry, I had.
So what was the? Hello?
Yeah, go ahead, Paul. Go ahead, Paul.
What was the piece where you're reaching out to Andrew on some legislation thing, Bob? I, it went so quick. Specifically, what are you reaching out for his assistance for?
That's, that's in regard to the, the enabling legislation that lets legislators know that we'll be going out to bond for, you know, that we'll be doing capital projects of 17.5 million and that they'll be supported by the issuance of a bond or a bond referendum. And that needs.
Can I ask a silly question? Yeah. That's already come before both councils, right, for approval? All right. Never mind.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, I, I have a question, Bobby. I mean, you probably already said it, but I just wanna get a handle on the $5 million self-funded. So are we gonna submit on September 15th? We're gonna submit both, correct? We're gonna submit the, the stage two of the bond?
Yes.
And the $5 million list, correct?
Well, the $5 million is actually, and it, and it can be modified, but in talking with Well, the five million is actually, and it and it can be modified, but in talking with Jim and Steve and Jeremy and admin, the I'm just trying to pull it up. It's more like in the nine point six range right now. But part of that is, remember, under self-funding, you, even under bond, you only have to do fifty percent of the projects. If fifty percent of the projects is the HVAC system on a ten million dollar self-funded.
And and so the thinking is, we know that we have to do HVAC. We know what the price tag is on HVAC. We know that the fifty percent mark is the key. If we ended up with more things approved and we happened to come upon some money that we could use for capital projects, it's always nice to have more things approved than we than we have the money or intention to do right away so that we don't have to rush through to get, you know, stage one, stage two approval for something that we didn't have on the list. But we could satisfy our fifty percent mark. I mean, under this plan, which is going to be discussed at the capital committee tomorrow, we could have the fifty percent mark met just by doing the HVAC system.
Right.
Okay.
But how we self-fund it? I mean, seriously, how are we going to self-fund that? Because we're going to have to come up with, we're going to have to come up with at least half of that on our own.
Yep. Great. I I agree. I I think that we're going to have to come up with it one way or the other when it, when it fails in any minute.
Right.
Okay.
We'll have to figure it out.
Yep.
I'm just trying to get a hand, I'm just trying to get a hand on the submittal, Bob, as far as like making sure we have it on time. That's, I was just asking my date questions. So we're going to submit them together. And then let's say the bond goes to the voters in, what were you think, were you thinking earlier than April, or were you thinking like February?
We would want to do it before before February, because coming out of the last meeting, we want to be able to say if it doesn't pass, if the seventeen point four does not, that's the all-day referendum, then we need to be ready to submit the self-funded, which would be, which would be the self-funded stage two, which is that date is February fifteenth, roughly.
Okay, I guess I'm confused.
You follow that?
No, because I thought we were submitting it September fifteenth with the bond.
Stage one, so stage two for the seventeen point four goes in Septem, goes in September. So seventeen point four, stage two. Right now, it's nine point six, stage one in September.
Oh, okay.
Now we go to February. We're voting on the seventeen point four before February fifteenth.
Yep.
That bond referendum is defeated.
Yep.
February fifteenth, we submit stage two for self-funding.
Okay, so I was getting the stages. I was including the stages, okay.
Yeah, in the, right now, you know, Andrew and his firm, they're, they're investigating the whole legislative component because you need to have that enabling legislation.
Right, okay. And then, but that still would allow us to make the date of the cutoff of having an approved MOE, if you, right, for the, for the, for the capital projects, okay?
That, that's, that's the goal.
Okay, good. Anyone else have any questions? Good? Okay. The subcommittee is meeting tomorrow. They'll finalize the projects for the self-funded. And then will that come back to school committee for the first September meeting so that all gets approved by school committee? With the recommendations from the building committee? Bob, you're muted.
It can't, there's no reason why.
Okay, Bob's still muted. I see his lips moving. There you go. You found the button?
That's, yeah, this is like, that's, yeah, that's the plan to have the committee look at it. And I would just say that, you know, part of the, you know, as the superintendent said, you know, the, the thought is that half of the spend of a nine million, nine point six million is going to be on the HVAC system alone. But if we just did the HVAC system alone, Ride is going to put us through the wringer because really you're only addressing the high school, junior high school. So we, so we put in the, a couple of projects for, we put in the roof for Wallo, for Walloom, or Metcalf, I mean, and some additional work at the high school to address the C, the CTE program, the science labs and the greenhouse. Because at the end, we need, we need to get an approval.
Yep. Okay. All right, I'm good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's see, important dates and meetings. Okay, as of right now, anyway. September first is the all-staff orientation. September fourteenth is the first day of school for grades one to nine and pre-K orientation. September fifteenth, all grade levels go back. September eighth, school committee meeting, and September twenty-second, school committee meeting.
And just the September ninth date, Claudine, is for all kids, September, I'm sorry, the September fourteenth. So I'm glad that we, I'm glad that we talked about this. We're going to make an adjustment to that, that that becomes the first day of school for all, all students, one through twelve.
Okay, September fourteenth.
September fourteenth, yep.
Gotcha. Okay, so September fourteenth is all kids go back.
And I I'll make the adjustment on the calendar.
Okay. Very good, and we do not need executive session tonight, so if we can have a motion, let's see, a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, Cheryl seconded. Okay, member Kissinger?
Aye.
Member Donovan?
Aye.
Remember Green?
Aye.
Remember Allen? Diane, you have to unmute yourself. Okay, Diane raised her hand, so I'm going to say she's an I. Remember McFadden? I don't know if she wants to stay on here all night, so I guess she's an I. Remember McFadden?
Hi.
Okay. And I'm going to say member Gardner, but I think we lost Amy earlier. Okay, I'm an I, so motion carries. Thank you, everybody. Have a good night. Jim, congratulations again.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations. See you tomorrow, Bob.
Have a good week.
Maybe Jim.
Everybody.
Tape for you, Jim.
Thank you.